All present, Superintendent to report.
All right, so we are here for our annual budget meeting. We're projecting this to be about forty-five minutes. Lots of numbers are gonna be thrown out there. And you've got two documents that are gonna, we're gonna go through. The first is the budget packet. That's the one with the colored top, with the chalkboard. And then I also have the slides that we'll be going through presenting. Amber and I will be sharing the presenting on this, so feel free to ask questions as we go. All right, so for the budget hearing tonight, we'll present the twenty-three, twenty-four school budget. We'll look at our Fund seventy-three balance sheet investments as of June thirtieth of two thousand twenty-three. We will look at a presentation of the revenues and expenditures for Pack of Pups, and then have a couple of key takeaways at the end. Want to share my appreciation for Allison and Amber for all the work that they did on putting this together. Countless hours really, making sure that our budget is aligned with what we believe our district goals are and our values are. So a big thank you to those two. So in preparation for the budget, we are gonna be looking at the budget packet. And I'll be going through a line item, kind of line item for you. I'll make it easy and show you kind of where we are as we go through this. But excited to share with you that we are bringing to you a balanced budget that is not projected to use any fund balance or any short-term borrowing. So we're gonna start by looking at page two of the revenues of the budget packet. So our local revenue sources, that is gonna be your two-hundreds, is gonna be a total of two million, eight hundred and seven thousand, eight hundred and eighty-three dollars. And what makes up that total amount is our beginning fund balance of our general operating fund, or Fund ten. That is right now at four million, four hundred and sixty thousand, three hundred and ninety-three dollars and fifty-eight cents. That's considered a very healthy fund balance. It's about forty-three percent of our general budget for a year. So it's a strength, I think, of our district to have a strong fund balance for that. Our local tax levy will be about two million, four hundred and sixty-four thousand, one hundred and thirty-seven dollars. That's line item two-ten, under taxes you will see. That is down two hundred and twenty thousand, eight hundred and twelve dollars from last year. So again, this is only our general fund that we're looking at. The Algoma Venture Academy, or ABA Federal Grant, we are gonna receive one hundred and twenty-five thousand, five hundred and forty-four dollars this year of that. And then our school activity income, line two-seventy you will see, is about fourteen thousand dollars. That is sporting events, anytime we collect ticket fees for activities that we do. Our interest of investments, line two-eighty, will be a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. And then our other revenue and local sources, or two-ninety, will be about seventy-four thousand, two hundred and two. That includes gifts, donations, student fees, any income that we take in for rentals, and summer school revenue. All right, we'll jump down to the three-hundreds, which is the transfer of revenue services or sources. Our payment for services is three hundred and eighty-four thousand, one hundred and forty-four dollars. That includes all of our open enrollment into the district funds. So any students that live outside the district that are attending here. Our revenue sources for the five-hundred, which is the intermediate sources, is six thousand, one hundred and seventy-seven dollars and eighty cents. That's transfer, our transit of aid, which is Perkins Loan Grant that we receive for our students that are taking dual credit courses. And then for the six-hundreds, our state revenue sources, we are six thousand, four hundred and thirty-five, six million, four hundred and thirty-five thousand, seven hundred and eighty dollars. That includes a transportation aid of sixty-five hundred. We have a common school library aid, which is forty-one thousand, eight hundred and eighty-two dollars. Our equalization aid, or line six-twenty, is five million, five hundred and eighty-one, five million, five hundred and eighty-one thousand, thirteen dollars. Our special projects and grants, which is line six-thirty, is gonna be eighteen thousand, one hundred and forty dollars. That includes some CTE, college career technical education, educator effectiveness grants, and the Wisconsin Assessment of Reading Grant that we received. And the last one is called Sage, or Student Achievement Guarantee and Education Grant. That's line six-fifty, two hundred and thirty-five thousand, one hundred and forty-four dollars. So you can see, state revenue is a large chunk of the amount that we receive for income for the district. Continue down with the six-hundreds. We have some other state revenue local sources, line six-sixty, that's about thirty-five hundred dollars. The DNR owns some property within the district, so we receive tax credit for them for that. And then other state revenues, which includes the six-ninety, if there's computer aid and per pupil aid that we receive, we're about five hundred and forty-nine thousand, six hundred and one dollars for that. Jumping to the seven-hundreds, which is federal revenue sources. We're projected to make seven hundred and thirty-four thousand, four hundred and ninety-eight dollars and seventy-three cents from federal sources. A big chunk of that is gonna be the S R three funds. We have a remaining balance of S R three of five hundred and thirty-one thousand, nine hundred and sixty dollars. And again, just a reminder, that needs to be spent by September of twenty-four. So we're just under a year now. We have Title II A revenue, which is line seven-thirty. It's twenty-two thousand, three hundred and seventy-six dollars, and that's used for professional development. Title IV, line seven-thirty, is about ten thousand dollars that we use for technology and physical education grants. And then Title I is seven, line seven-fifty, and that's one hundred and forty-five thousand, one hundred and sixty-three dollars and twenty-four cents. There's some additional federal aid that we receive through the state, which is line seven-eighty, and that totals seventy, or twenty-five hundred, or twenty-five thousand dollars. Our revenue sources for other eight-hundreds, we're projected to about nine hundred and fifty dollars. And that'll be through the sale of some district equipment through auctions that we'll be doing this year. And then we're gonna jump into some expenditures, and Amber's gonna take it over.
So this first section here for your instruction, undifferentiated curriculum, this is stuff that's not specifically assigned to a grade. We've got four million, seven hundred and thirty thousand, four hundred and thirty-nine dollars and thirty-four cents. That covers a lot of personnel costs, salaries, benefits, taxes. And then there's also some classroom furniture that we put in there this year. That was listed as low priority on the referendum. There was room within this budget to cover some of those needs. It's not a huge amount, but it is a good portion, about fifty thousand. Moving on to support sources. So these are your pupil services instructional, again, a lot of wages in here. Three million, five hundred and eighty-seven thousand, four hundred and forty-six dollars and sixty-two cents. Your S R three funds are in this section. We have about two hundred thousand dollars in capital expenses in the SRO in this section. So all of those S R funds, we're not accounting, we're accounting for all of them, but we're, we know we have to take some of those over into the following year and cover them with operating expenses. So we're trying not to use the full amount on our day-to-day operations. So we're gonna get some capital purchases out of that. And there was a pretty good increase to the property insurance costs. Moving right along to the four-hundreds, non-program transactions. These are your inter-fund transfers. We have a million, sixty thousand, forty-four dollars and fifty-seven cents. Out of those inter-fund transfers, Fund twenty-seven, your special education fund, is gonna receive eight hundred and eighty-four thousand, five hundred and twenty dollars and fifty-seven cents. This is a very small decrease from last year of two thousand, eighty-nine dollars and twenty-nine cents. Then we have to cover the non-referendum debt payments for Fund thirty-eight. That amount is a hundred and one thousand, one fifty-eight. And then we've got a small transfer out to capital projects of seventy-four thousand, three hundred and sixty-six dollars. This section also includes expenditures of nine hundred and ninety-one thousand, five hundred and three dollars for instructional service payments. So that is open enrollment of students to other districts that we have to pay. That amount is six hundred and seventy-seven dollars, thousand, three hundred and seventy-nine dollars, which is actually a decrease of forty-seven thousand, seven hundred and ninety-three dollars from last year. So that's pretty nice. Then the voucher payments. Voucher payments are those payments made to the private school districts for students that are enrolled there. The amount that we are paying out this year is three hundred and fourteen thousand, one hundred and twenty-four dollars. That is an increase of a hundred and two thousand, two hundred and eleven dollars from last year. So that's pretty big.
And this is just, this is just an estimate?
That's the number that was provided to us by DPI.
Oh, okay.
Yep, that's included on the revenue limit worksheet that DPI gives to us.
So you did get it, okay, good.
Good we got it, not a good number.
No, no, it's good we have it, but yes.
Right, yes. So we're gonna move on to page four in your public hearing booklets, Fund twenty-one. The Fund twenty-one is your gifts, donations, class dues. So we had a beginning fund balance of two hundred and twenty-eight thousand, one hundred and seventy-seven dollars. We are projecting to end the year with a hundred and eighty-one thousand, five hundred and eighty-seven dollars. So there is gonna be some expenditure of those donations and fund balances.
All right, getting into Fund twenty-seven, so special education. We're gonna look at the revenues first. Total revenue sources for Fund twenty-seven is one million, seven hundred and eighty-two thousand, nine hundred and seventy-six dollars, fifty-seven cents. And what this really includes is the transfer from our general fund, Fund ten, of the eight hundred and eighty-four thousand, five hundred and twenty that Amber referenced. We have a cease-of-transit aid that we receive every year, seven thousand, three hundred dollars. And then we have some categorical state aid, four hundred and seventy-five thousand, six hundred and fifty-seven dollars. There's an IDA grant that's out there that we receive, two hundred and eighty-two thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars. And then the last one is some federal aid that we receive at a hundred, one hundred and thirty-two thousand, five hundred dollars. So the expenditures for special education equal what our revenues are. So you can see that total again, the one million, seven hundred and eighty-two, nine seventy-six. This really includes the bulk of salaries and benefits for our special education teachers, our administrators, support staff, as long, as well as some supplies, personal services, some classroom furniture, and technology software.
So that brings us up to your debt service funds. Fund thirty-eight is for the non-referendum or non-voted debt. We have a payment of a hundred and one thousand, one hundred and fifty-eight dollars that will be made out of this fund. It is going to be transferred in from the general fund, comes from the base tax levy. This is the last year for that payment. It, that loan will then be paid off. We have a tax levy for Fund thirty-nine of eight hundred and two thousand, five hundred dollars. That covers the referendum or voted debt. It covers the current payment plus a portion for deficence, so future debt payments. That helps, by adding that amount on, it helps keep that portion of the debt, the levy, tax levy level. And in order to use the deficence, you have to have current debt payments coming up to apply it to, which we do. And then there is a small amount for investment, interest on investments of a hundred and twenty-five dollars. You don't make much on your investments in this fund because you're collecting what you need to pay out, but there is a small delay between when it's collected and when you make the payment. So there is a small portion of interest earned. So that brings us to the capital projects fund, Fund forty-six. We have a transfer planned of seventy-four thousand, three hundred and sixty-six dollars coming out of Fund ten, general fund. And we also projected to receive about fifteen hundred dollars for sale of fixed assets. We currently have no expenditures planned out of Fund forty-six at this time. The fund balance available for future projects will be three hundred and two thousand, three hundred and six, three hundred and two thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars. You currently have a capital plan in place. Twenty-three, twenty-four is the last year of that existing plan. So later this year, we'll be working on getting that updated for the next ten years. The balance that is there of three hundred thousand is a small portion of probably what you need to cover your capital needs in that fund. So we're gonna look at, okay, how much do we need to put on the side every year so that we can build up that balance till we have enough to make a purchase? Then that balance will drop, and then you'll start building it up. So it should go up.
What is the sale of fixed assets?
Um, that could be some, some equipment that we have. So we have an old snowplow that we wanna auction off, some coolers, some milk coolers.
That's in this one and the other fund, or our sort?
Okay.
It just depends on who owns it, if it's district-wide, or if it belongs to, say, the elementary school specifically. So that takes us up to Fund fifty, the food service fund. The beginning balance of this fund is three hundred and seven thousand, seven hundred and fifty-nine dollars. We are anticipating revenues to total about four hundred and thirty thousand, nine hundred and forty dollars. That comes from both student fees and USDA reimbursement. Our expenditures should be around four hundred and sixty-two thousand, four hundred and nineteen dollars, giving us an ending fund balance around two hundred and seventy-six thousand, two eighty. We are using a portion of the fund balance here. That is due to DPI telling us we have too high of a fund balance in this particular fund, so we do need to bring it down a bit.
All right, Fund eighty, which is the community service fund. We'll look at some revenues first. So this fund really covers the following community programs that we offer here. Again, this is open to any child within the community. It's just not our own students here in Algoma, so. We offer childcare fees, which we'll be collecting eighty-two thousand dollars at the elementary school. We're projected for the Pack of Pups to receive a hundred and twenty thousand. And then we also have another ninety thousand that we collect in state fees for Pack of Pups. That's for the families that receive Wisconsin Shares assistance. So we also have two different scenarios we wanna present to you as terms of how much we wanna levy for our taxes. In your board packet, the first one had the eight hundred thousand dollars of levying. After doing some more in-depth and getting some numbers from DPI, we, we saw that that was gonna be about a fourteen percent increase on average for our taxpayers in their taxes. So we played with some numbers and we came up with a seven hundred and five thousand, which is scenario two, that you'll see in the levy amount, which decreases that percentage to about just under ten percent on average. And the last one is the Community Wellness Center dues, which is about fifty-two thousand dollars we'll collect in membership fees.
Jesse, the difference, a seventy-five thousand dollar difference. What, what?
Ninety-five thousand?
Yeah, yeah, mine, I'm not calculating.
Yeah.
Yeah, thanks, you need to depend on calculators. Where, where we see that difference, will that be made up next year's budget?
Great question. So part, a big portion of what we are looking to levy for Fund eighty is to make those payments back to the general fund for the purchase of the childcare. Originally, we had looked at doing that in one year. We may have to look at doing that over two years now, so.
I think, I think it's good that we're looking at a second scenario because with the assessments, the reassessment that just happened in the city and everyone's taxes that, you know, we're impacted by that, which we have no control over. I think we need to be real careful of the things that we do have control of, so.
I've always been trying to be very responsible to taxpayers, so. I think, I'm glad to see a scenario two, so.
Yeah, we'll go into a little more detail on what those scenarios will look like in the upcoming slides here. But just wanna mention too, I have this on the slide, but the beginning fund balance for Fund eighty was negative two hundred and sixty-nine thousand, three hundred and eighty-four dollars. Again, that's because of the purchase of building and the assets for Pack of Pups. All right, for Fund eighty expenditures, the childcare at the elementary school and our Little Stars program will come in at one hundred and ten thousand, five hundred and eighty-one dollars. Pack of Pups childcare will be three hundred and forty-two thousand, eight hundred and sixty dollars. Community Wellness Center will be one hundred and seventeen thousand, four hundred and fifteen, or fifty-two dollars. We have a small chunk that we provide to the community band, which is about twelve thousand, two hundred and seventy dollars. We have some community co-curriculars, or we run our middle school athletics through that because, again, any child that lives in the district can take part in that. That'll be twenty-one thousand, four hundred and twenty-two dollars. We run our summer school program through Fund eighty, which is about three hundred and four, or three thousand, four hundred and twenty dollars. The amazing Wolf Den program that we have at the elementary school will run fifty-five thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars. And then there's some contracted travel of four thousand, seven hundred dollars in there as well. So again, the balance sheet for Fund eighty, we need to pay back that purchase of the Pack of Pups childcare. If you remember, we purchased the building and equipment that was, went along with the building for two hundred and ninety-seven thousand, seven hundred and eighty-seven dollars and sixty cents last year. So that's the amount that we need to pay back to the general operating fund. Any questions so far with Fund eighty?
Let's, let's go back to two sides now.
Yep.
So your Community Wellness Center and your one hundred and seventeen thousand, what is, what is all really included in that, staffing and?
Staffing, we do some of our electricity bills out of there because, again, that's, we disperse it throughout the different buildings, yep. We try and always purchase one or two new pieces of equipment for the wellness center, for the, for the gym. So we just did new flooring in the multi-purpose room, I think is what it's called.
Which is very nice, by the way, very nice.
So maintenance items, I guess, too. Part of Whitney's salary comes out of there as well. All right, let's talk a little bit about the scenarios that I mentioned earlier. We're gonna look at scenario one, so I'm referring to page eleven on the budget packet. And we really wanna compare the mill rate and the historical tax levies that we have had over the last couple of years. So scenario one breaks down, again, with the eight hundred thousand dollars that we would levy for Fund eighty. If we were to go through with that, we'd be asking for four million, fifteen thousand, nine hundred and thirty-seven dollars for a tax levy. The equalized value within the district would be five hundred and eighty-six million, six hundred and thirty-four thousand, three hundred and ninety-four dollars. That would bring our mill rate to six dollars and ninety-two cents. That's a decrease of forty-eight cents from last year. And on the back page, on page twelve of your packet, you can see how those tax levies are broken up by municipalities. So we have five municipalities in our district, Anapi, Casco, Lincoln, Pierce, and the City of Algoma. And for scenario two, again, looking at levying seven hundred and five thousand for Fund eighty. That will be a total levy that we'd be asking for is three million, nine hundred and sixty-four thousand, nine hundred and thirty-seven dollars. The equalized value, again, really does not change. It stays the same as what we had. And then the mill rate would be six dollars and seventy-six cents, which is a decrease of sixty-four cents from last year. And then on page fourteen, you can see how that's broken up by the different municipalities. What are thoughts on the two scenarios?
Well, again, what I had initially said, I think as much as we, we, we have always, like you said, been very conservative and very careful in terms of our, the taxes that we put on the taxpayer. And even this, you know, this mill rate dropping is actually, you know, something that is a little concerning for the long-term financing of the district. Because, again, the amount that we put out there, even if some, you know, the, the darn mill rates are so darn confusing in terms of how it translates into what people actually pay on their tax thing that says Algoma School District. And especially when you have a year of assessments, you know, because the levy is the amount per thousand, right?
The mill rate is.
The mill, excuse me, the mill rate is the amount per thousand. So it can have gone down for us, but if your assessment of your house went up, you know, by thousands, you're gonna be paying more in those thousands. And so it can look like the school is asking for more money, but we're actually just getting a different part of the total amount, right? I mean, I guess that's.
For the most part, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that's the simplistic way of describing it. So even if we're lowering the mill rate, some people are gonna see increases on their tax bill. But that isn't.
Which we don't have any control over, or with the assessment part, but we can, we can make that, yeah, tax burden to the taxpayer a little bit easier to swallow if we take scenario two. And so that's, that would be my thought.
Yep.
And I can say, there was a document that was floating around last week between many of the districts in northeast Wisconsin, and I think every district's mill rate was dropping, from what I could see. So we are not alone in, in this situation.
What's the biggest risk to the schools if we go with scenario two?
Scenario two, I would say the biggest risk would be repaying that Pack of Pups back to the general fund. Think we can do it within, hopefully, our first year, but there is a scenario that we would have to possibly do it with over two years, basically.
So if your revenues from the childcare don't come in as high as we're anticipating, that's gonna negatively affect it. I think we took a pretty conservative approach on estimating those revenues, so I, I'm pretty comfortable with the seven hundred and five. I think you'll be just fine with that.
Any other thoughts by the board members on the scenarios, or questions related to them?
So you're thinking by June timeframe, you're hoping, whatever that was, that one year is for the childcare?
It would be the end of the fiscal period, which runs July through June. It's been nice because we got to see, we had a summer now of having Pack of Pups, so we got to see how much revenue was made over the summer because that's substantially different than what it is during the school year. We have many more kids, so. I think after a full year, though, of having it open, will give us a better idea of, you know, what the capacity is and what the revenue will be generated from that. All right, page fifteen and sixteen of your packet is the revenue limit worksheet. We presented two of them, scenario one and scenario two. Amber, you wanna talk about those?
So all the yellow and green boxes are numbers provided to us by DPI. The red boxes in the bottom right corner are the ones we have control over. Under fourteen A, the two million, four hundred and fifty-seven thousand, four hundred and thirty-seven dollars, that is the maximum amount that DPI will allow us to take for the general fund tax levy. The next line, that eight hundred and two thousand, five hundred dollars, is the voted referendum debt. And then the next one down, fifteen B, on scenario one is eight hundred thousand dollars. That's for Fund eighty, the community services. And on scenario two, it's seven hundred and five thousand.
What this does is calculates the mill rate, which you'll see at the very far bottom, under it says levy rate. If you move the decimals over, that's how you create your mill rate, so. Thing's important to note, too, on these is your, is our FTE. Remember, every student receives a per pupil amount. You can see the three-year average is how we use that for the revenue. Um, you can see the three-year average is how we use that for the, the Revenue Limit Worksheet. Um, this year, we are dropping down to six hundred and, or, yeah, six, six hundred and sixty-eight FTE. Um, that averages over three years, that brings us to six seventy-nine. Um, it's a decrease of twenty-one that we saw. And trying to understand why that's so much lower, we have a very small 4K class this year. Um, and we had a very high graduating class last year. So those two things are kind of working against us here on our membership count, so.
You've kinda been through that scenario before, remember that small class that we had?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. And all the way up through twelve grades, yeah, it was.
All right, if you wanna turn to page seventeen, um, Fund Seventy-Three, which is Other Post-Employment Benefits, um, or OPEB. Um, this is as of June thirtieth. We need to report out on this annually at our, um, budget hearing. So the beginning balance as of June thirtieth was one million, one hundred thousand, seven hundred and thirty-eight dollars. We collected, uh, thirty-three thousand, seven hundred and seventy-one dollars in interest through the June thirtieth time. Um, retirees contributed five thousand, ninety-five dollars. And we withdrew, um, for the retiree benefits in twenty-two, twenty-three, thirty-nine thousand, four hundred and three dollars. The implicit rate subsidy, uh, was fourteen thousand, nine hundred and fourteen dollars. And then some fees and losses that we had that we had to pay in was three thousand, five hundred dollars. That left us with an ending balance of one million, eighty-one thousand, seven hundred and eighty-seven dollars and sixty cents. Um, in looking at these numbers, I feel like that's a very high amount. We don't have many staff members, um, projected to take part in this, um, anymore. Many of our staff members have either retired or have left the district. So, um, it's a pretty healthy amount. I'm not concerned about this at all, so.
Can you, can you explain what the implicit rate subsidy would take?
Go ahead, we had to look it up today, too.
Yeah, so there's a type of accountant called an actuarial that'll look at the cost to, to the district for the health plans and what that cost to the district is without providing the retiree benefits. And so they do a calculation in their fancy math and figure out, okay, if you did not have this retiree benefit plan, your cost to the general population would be almost fifteen thousand dollars less than it is. So then they apply it as an expense to this account and they give that money back to the Fund Ten.
Okay. So Jesse, do you know approximately how many, um, retirees are getting, are still on this, are getting up there after?
I mean, are currently on it right now that have left the district or retired from the district?
Well, retired, they, you know, they haven't reached the sixty-five.
Um, if I had to guess, anywhere from fifteen to twenty right now, so not many. And I think we only have one or two that still qualify actually, I believe.
Current, since Act Ten's open. I would say this is quite healthy, too.
And then one question, getting back to the, um, revenue worksheet. Um, H is the private school voucher, right? The three fourteen, what's that, three four?
Yep, that's three four.
And, um, and again, that, I just think it's really important in the climate that we're in to reinforce that that is something that we have no control over. Um, that is a number that's given to us in terms of, of what is going to the private school, but it is part of our budget and therefore it is taxed. So it also contributes to the mill rate. And so people need to understand that that three hundred and fourteen thousand dollars is something we are paying in our taxes for the school. But it is not coming to the school, it's coming to, it's going to the private schools.
Correct.
And I would also add to that, Barb, that this has happened several times, I know, not just here in Algoma, but many other districts, is once a student starts in a private school that receives vouchers, and if they choose to come back to the public school, that money stays with that private school. It does not come back to the public school. So there are student now, but we're not getting any revenue for it, so.
Yeah, so after that third Friday count, because every, that third Friday count, so first of October, that private school, because we, we, we don't, we can't meet the needs of this child. And we need to use for the public school, but the money, child comes, money stays, yeah.
And that's different for an open enrollment, because once that child leaves, say, we have a student that lives in Algoma that goes to Kiwanee, and then after that third Friday, they decide to come back to Algoma, that money follows them. We, we receive revenue for that, but it's different for vouchers, it stays.
Yeah, I think that needs to be.
The special education vouchers, if I remember correctly, we can basically tax again for, for that one, right?
Yes, that's right.
We can double, actually, it's like a double tax. So if we need to, special education, we can, we can tax the taxpayers again for that, if.
We did not have any special ed vouchers this year, which we were projecting that there were going to be, but we did not, so.
They probably put those students back into the public school, maybe.
I'm gonna move on to Pack of Pups revenues. Um, I thought it was important to put this information out there since this is somewhat new to the district yet. Um, but since opening in spring of twenty, two thousand and twenty-three, again, we opened on May first, the exact, um, we have generated seventy-eight thousand, one hundred, or one dollar, basically, in, um, tuition. Of that, the twenty-seven thousand, two hundred and sixty-eight dollars has been collected through the Wisconsin Shares Program for families that are eligible based on their income levels. Um, we're projected this year to receive two hundred and ten thousand in revenue, um, based off of what we've currently collected and trying to project that out, so. Our expenditures from May to June, again, I took just May to June because that's the end of our fiscal period, um, was three hundred and thirty-eight thousand, nine hundred and sixty-nine dollars and ninety-five cents. That included, the bulk of it was the purchase of the, the building and the assets. Um, our projected expenditures for July of this year through June of twenty-four will be about three hundred and forty-two, um, thousand, eight hundred and sixty. That'll include salaries, benefits, supplies, maintenance, and food for our students. So some key takeaways I just want to highlight here, um, and then we'll jump into, um, the rest of the agenda here. But, again, that declining enrollment is something I think we need to monitor very closely as a district. Um, making sure that, that three-year average keeps dropping, as you can see the numbers there. Um, so every student is important, right? Our open enrollment funds, again, into the district has increased by thirty-four thousand, eight hundred and thirty-six dollars, while our open enrollment funds out of the district has decreased by forty-seven thousand, seven hundred and eighty-three dollars. If you add those two together, that's, that's a healthy, um, increase for what we have this year. And then what we just touched on was the increase in school vouchers from two hundred and eleven thousand, nine hundred and thirteen to three hundred and fourteen thousand, one hundred and twenty-four dollars, which, again, is an increase of about one hundred and two thousand, two hundred and eleven dollars, just in vouchers from one year. Um, again, last year for our S O three funds, the total for our S O three that we have remaining is five hundred and thirty-one thousand, nine hundred and fifty-nine dollars. Of that, we're using three hundred and five thousand, six hundred and twenty-seven dollars for salaries and benefits of our staff. And then the remaining balance will be used for some capital items. It's important that we make sure that we're thinking ahead to how we're gonna cover that three hundred and five because that's a reoccurring cost every year. So, um, we have some thoughts and plans on how we're gonna make that up within the next year budget, next year's budget. Uh, property taxes for the General Fund or Fund Ten are lower this year by two hundred and twenty thousand, eight hundred and twelve dollars. Uh, this is partially due to the per pupil amount that we received from the state. Again, if you recall from the state budget, um, we were a low-revenue district, so we were receiving ten thousand dollars per student, which got bumped up to eleven thousand dollars per student.
And is that for the next two years?
That is gonna be an increase now of three hundred and twenty-five dollars per year.
Okay.
On top of that. Um, number six, the overall property tax levy is increasing by four hundred and twenty-one thousand, one hundred and twenty-eight dollars with Scenario One, or it's gonna increase by three hundred and twenty-six thousand, one hundred and twenty-eight dollars with Scenario Two. And then the mill rate will drop either by forty-eight cents or sixty-four cents, depending on what the board decides with the scenarios. And then the last one, I just think is really important, that we are presenting that balanced budget. Um, we're in a much different realm than what we were last year. I think last year at this time, we were looking at a deficit, so, um, happy to share that we have a balanced budget.
Questions or discussion before we go into actions? All right, all of these require vocal votes. So I need a motion to tentatively approve the twenty-three, twenty-four budget as presented. So I'll second. Motion made by Pat, seconded by Ann, vocal vote, Chris.
Yes.
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 Chris.
Yes.
Yes.
I need a motion to levy a tax of two million, four hundred and fifty-seven thousand, four hundred and thirty-seven dollars in accordance with the General Fund Ten budget.
I'll move.
Motion made by Chris Fly.
Second.
Seconded by Lonnie. Vocal vote, Lonnie.
Yes.
Chrissy.
Yes.
Chris.
Yes.
Ann.
Yes.
Chris. I need a motion to levy a tax of eight hundred and two thou-
Oh, go ahead, I'm sorry, Barb, I was looking at the, I'm sorry.
Getting too excited.
Yeah.
Uh, motion to levy a tax of eight hundred and two thousand, five hundred, Capital Project Syncing Fund Thirty-Nine. Motion made by Chrissy.
Second.
Seconded by Chris. Vocal vote, Chris.
Yes.
Pat.
Yes.
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 Chrissy.
Yes.
Sorry, which Chris did the second?
I did.
All right, so now we need to go into the scenarios. So I need, first of all, a motion for which scenario, um, a motion for either scenario.
I would like to make a motion to accept Scenario Two for the tax levy of seven hundred and five thousand dollars for the Community Service Fund eighty.
I'll second that. All right, I have a motion and a second. We will do a vocal vote on that. Chris Benish.
Yes.
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 Chris Fly.
Jesse.
Lonnie.
Yes.
And I also say yes. Motion carries for Scenario Two. And I need a motion to adjourn. So moved. Chrissy and Chris Benish. On favor.
Aye.
All those motions carries.